Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 25, 2020, meeting of the Nassau County Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus emergency, state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings in pursuant to Governor Cuomo's Executive Order 220.1 issued on March 12, 2020, suspending the open meetings law, the June 25, 2020, meeting of the Nassau County Planning Commission will be held electronically via Zoom and may be viewed by the public via livestream on Zoom, which is a video conference application as described below. The June 25, 2020, NCPC meeting. The public may send in their comments for the public portion of the meeting via email to the address below. I'll give it to you in a second. The NCPC will review and consider these public comments prior to making a final decision. A recording of the meeting will be posted on the Nassau County Planning Commission website. Instead of a public meeting open for the public to attend in person, members of the public may listen to or log into the video conference. Access and instructions for Zoom is available on the Nassau County Planning Department webpage, which is located at www.nassaucounty.ny.gov/2856/Planning-Department. Final decisions will be made on items contained in Section F at the June 25, NCPC meeting. The Nassau County Planning Commission will be accepting public comments for the public portion of the June 25 meeting by email, which can be sent to ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov. The Planning Commission will accept public comments via email for agenda items contained in B, C, and D, I believe.
That's correct.
Yep. On Thursday, July 2, what did I go? B, C, D, email address that I just gave you. Late comments received after Monday, June 29, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. will not be accepted. So get your comments in before 4:00 p.m. on this Monday, June 29. A second meeting will take place after public comments are received, reviewed, and considered by the Planning Commission for each item contained in the agenda item B, C, D, and E on Thursday, July 2 at 9:00 a.m., where the Planning Commission will make a final decision on each item contained in those agenda sections. This meeting will also be conducted using a virtual meeting program. Access instructions will be provided on the Nassau County Planning Department homepage. So with that, we'll do a roll call. Commissioner Warren. Remember, you've got to unmute yourself.
Present. Present.
Commissioner Shaper is excused. Commissioner Elaby is partially available for audio only. Commissioner Blue. Third Vice Chair Lewis.
Present.
Second Vice Chair Shapiro.
Present.
First Vice Chair Greenfield.
Present.
Chairman Glennon here, all present and accounted for. Entertain acknowledgement of the receipted transcripts for June 6 and June 11, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Just one brief announcement before we get started. I'm going to shut off my phone. Jasleen Paz, who's been with the Planning Commission. Jas, is it a year or two years?
A year and a half.
A year and a half, yes. So we were very fortunate to have Jas with us. She came in at a very critical time where we were short-staffed and really stepped up and stepped into a situation that was rough under any circumstances and made it a smooth transition. So she's moving on to Greenia Pastures with the town of Huntington, and we wish her all the best, and I want to thank Jas for all your hard work and dedication. Thanks, Jas.
Thank you, Jas. I still have.
You're welcome, Jas.
Okay. Ospac.
Yes, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the meeting is open.
There are two Ospac cases today. I'm going to group them together. They're Ospac File Number 3 of 2020 and 4 of 2020, both permanent easements located in Uniondale. One of them is in the Coliseum parking lot in Charles Lindbergh Boulevard, Section 44, Block F, Lot 41, and the other is in the vicinity of the new Nassau County Police Academy on Perimeter Road, Section 44, Block F, Lot 182. Nassau County is requesting permission to convey a permanent easement to LIPA, P S and G, for the construction, operation, and maintenance of switchgear equipment. The subject property is approximately 450 square feet for Ospac File 3 of 2020 and for Ospac File 4 of 2020 is 500 square feet. Today, we have Kevin Walsh from Nassau County Real Estate and the County Attorney's Office, as well as the P S and G team to answer any questions.
Appearance for the record. Got to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Kevin Walsh. Good morning, Commissioners. Hope you're all well. For the Office of Real Estate Services.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, everybody. Just one clarification. The lot number for the parcel at the Coliseum is actually Lot 411, 411.
So Kevin, we had.
Are you getting information or just telling us the number?
No, just so it's correct on the record. That's all. Just I think John said.
It's the 411 information number. That's why I said that.
There you go. It's a 411 for your information.
That was a typo on the agenda. The public notice was sent out correctly, as well as the case summaries provided to the Commission is correct.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead, Kevin.
Just a quick summary. These are both installations by LIPA to service the needs that are growing in the Mitchell Field area, both for any development at the Coliseum Hub site and also not too far away over where the new police academy is being built. These are for switch gears to anticipate more electric load needs. Permits have already been granted to start the work, but these are the permanent easements as we've done many that your Commission in the past has reviewed and approved for our needs going forward.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, thoughts, suggestions on the Commission is?
Yeah, just Kevin, just to clarify, we did see presentations on from P S E G regarding a couple of these projects in this area. Is this that same project, just at a later stage, or is this a new improvement?
These are new changes. This is for switchgear. Both of the square footages are small. One of them is 450 square feet, one hundred's 500 square feet. They're separate. These are for the needs of the growth of those specific facilities there in the vicinity of. You may recall, closer across Charles Lindbergh, adjacent to the Suez Trigent facility, we approved and alleged approved a permanent easement for an actual substation. So this is kind of, it's kind of related, but these are separate, and I think LIPA is available to answer more specifics to it, but these are separate in the sense that they locate the road loads close to where they're going to be.
Kevin, are you multitasking by vacuuming at the same time as making a presentation?
No, that's not me. I'm in the office today for the first day, though. This is our first day back.
Okay.
Can anybody, while they're not talking?
So Kevin, just to wrap that up, so in those previous presentations, like when we were talking about a whole substation being added in, we had a whole discussion about landscaping and some of those kinds of impacts. We talked a little bit about the entrance and said, this is a smaller item, so that it doesn't raise as much of those questions. Is that essentially what you're saying? Or are there similar plans to make sure that after it's done that you don't see a big electrical unit jumping out?
Correct. Actually, one of these will be below grade in a parking area, and then the other one by the police academy, I think, is more in a land area where there may be some vegetation. I know there's a provision in the easement that's been drafted to make sure anything is restored, but like I said, one is 500 square feet, one hundred's 450. So they're not, certainly not the size of a substation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd noticed you have some P S E G folks here. I don't know if anybody wanted, if you wanted them to make any kind of appearance or?
Not unless anybody needs to. So for the public, just so you know, this matter will stay open for public comment until Monday, June 29 at 4:00. If you have any comments, submit them via email to ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov. That's ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov, and make sure they're there before 4:00 p.m. on Monday. Next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be safe, Kev.
Thanks, you too, everyone.
Bye now.
Before calling the next case, I just need a second to move some people around.
John, do you want us to make a motion to close the public hearing on this?
No, we've got to keep it open until Monday.
Oh, because of the way we're doing it.
Okay, so the next case is?
Treasure Island.
Yes. See, acknowledge contract vendee and adjust bond amounts for major subdivision application for final map application approval. Nassau County Planning Commission File Number 1989-F1 is the map of Treasure Island Marina at 2880 Ocean Avenue in Seaford, Town of Hempstead, Section 63, Block 67, Lot 1. At the March 12, 2020 Nassau County Planning Commission meeting, this application received final subdivision approval of an 8.95 acre parcel into 15, two family dwelling lots and one marina. The attorney for the contract vendee, You &amp; Me Homes LLC, requested that the Nassau County Planning Commission to adopt a resolution acknowledging the contract vendee and to revise the bond amounts that were conditioned on the original final approval. After discussions with the applicant's attorney, Nassau County DPW personnel, counsel to the Commission, and staff, we agree that the bond amounts should be revised to correctly include the public improvements only for this development. The new numbers are as follows: bonds are cash in blue of $206,278.40, cash escrow of $8,441.60, and inspection fee of $25,766.40. Today, we have with us Al D'Agostino, who represents the contract vendee, and we also have John Farrell, who's filling in for Christian Brown as the applicant's attorney.
All right, John, you might not know this, but your co-counselor here has his grandson's birthday party to get to, so we'll let Al go first. Appearance for the record.
Albert A. D'Agostino, the firm is Manurven D'Agostino, PC, 107 South Central Avenue, Valley Stream, 11580, though I haven't been there since mid-March. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, members of the staff, and John Farrell. We are in the process of assigning the contract from You &amp; Me Homes to two LLCs, and the two LLCs are Castle Hill Development LLC and Highland Estate Developers LLC, and our intention is to, at closing, acquire the residential lots in checkerboard fashion. I have been in communication with the transactional attorney for the seller, Stephen Albright, and his latest last evening, and he's aware of what we are proposing. There has been no objection raised. The prime goal is to try to get this to the point of filing, of us posting the bond, and by us meaning Castle Hill Developers LLC and Highland Estates Developers LLC, and it is my assumption, and that's a big word, that the Commission will require both of those entities to be on the bond in lieu of the current contract vendee, You &amp; Me Homes, and there are the same principles involved, and my clients are very willing to do that, to have both the entities on the bond. Other than that, I'm ready to respond to any questions that you might have.
John, question for you. It says that there were discussions, including DPW personnel. Do we have anything in writing? Anything in writing from them?
What those discussions were was to provide a new procedure that everyone's on board with, so everyone's on the same page with regards to public improvement bonding issues. Those were.
I'm asking, do we have a writing from DPW on their agreement on the procedures?
No, that is not finalized yet.
Okay.
But we do approve, we do agree with the new bond amounts.
Okay. Counsel Farrell, anything?
No, we acknowledge the contract vendee.
You've got to put your appearance on the record first.
Sorry. For the applicant, John Farrell, with the firm Sonward Coshignano, our offices are at 333 Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite 601, Uniondale, New York. We acknowledge the contract vendee, agree to the amended bond amounts, and looking to wrap this up as soon as possible.
I just have one question. I just have one question for our counsel. The application came in as the contract vendee of You &amp; Me Homes, as Al D'Agostino indicated that those same members are also making up two separate LLCs. Is that okay?
Yes, I believe it's okay. Do you agree, Bob?
Bob's on the line. He wants to know what the question precisely is. He can hear it. John.
The original applicant, the original application for this, for this application included the contract vendee as You &amp; Me Homes. Albert D'Agostino put on the record today that those same members of You &amp; Me Homes created two entities. Are we going to acknowledge those entities today without the paperwork that was submitted?
Are they dissolving You &amp; Me? Or how's it working, Al?
No, You &amp; Me is just assigning it to the two new entities, and the purpose for that, obviously, is to protect the zoning determination by checkerboarding the titles at closing. And in the normal situation, the original applicant would have to post the bond, and we're perfectly willing and able to post the bond, and both of those entities would be joint obligors on the bond. That's what I'm proposing to the Commission, so it would be.
Okay, as long as they're going to be on the bond, I think we're okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We're not looking to separate the bond into alternate lots, two bonds. I'm proposing one bond with both of them on it, so that the integrity of the security is maintained for the Commission and the county.
Right, and if there's an assignment agreement, maybe just give that to staff so they have it in the file as well.
Right. We're in the process of finalizing that, and unfortunately, with working remotely, it hasn't been as efficient as an expeditious as it would normally be.
As long as we have the other parties on, as co-obligors on the bond, I think we're fine, but I just want the other part of it into the file so we have it.
No problem.
Anyone else? Again, if you, to the public, if you have any comments, they need to be submitted by Monday at 4:00 p.m. to ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov. That's ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov, and we will reserve decision until next Thursday, July 2. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Be safe. Enjoy the birthday party.
Thank you. I'm sure my grandson will. Have a good day.
Enjoy, Al.
Bye.
Okay.
Did I just sign off on this now and I don't screw up your whole system?
John, you want to knock them off? Okay. All right, the next is the minor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm recusing myself on this case. I can't fill out the affidavit form, but I don't want to record it like that.
And I'm also going to mute my phone, which Counsel O'Brien is on as well, and he's recusing himself.
This is for the extension of time. I don't think you have to. It's the next case that you would have to recuse.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought we were up to Roosevelt. Okay, I'm on extension of time, no problem.
Bob, you're back. This is a different case.
I jumped the gun.
This is for 33, 2019. They are filing for an extension of time. Applicants for DCP Ventures LLC and Lake Road Enterprises LLC, site location 63, 71, and 73, Lake Road in Manhasset, New York, which is in the village of Plandon Manor, Section 3, Block 182, lots 110, 124, 138, 139, 210, 224, 238, 240, and 440. The 206,864 square foot area subject property, which is both land and underwater land, is situated on the northwest corner of Bayside Drive and Lake Road in the village of Plandon Manor. The village of Plandon Manor is part of the Manhasset School District, which lies in the town of North Hempstead. Proposed Lot 1 will have 92.6 feet of frontage on Bayside Drive. The upland lot will be 31,982 square feet. The underwater land will be 34,758 square feet. A total for Lot 1, both upland and underwater, would be 66,740 square feet. Proposed Lot 2 will have 107.83 feet of frontage on Lake Road. The upland would be 28,086 square feet. The underwater land will be 34,679 square feet. A total for Lot 2, upland and underwater, would be 62,765 square feet. Proposed Lot 3 will have 75.8 feet of frontage on Lake Road. The upland lot will have 29,000 square feet. The underwater land would be 48,358 square feet. A total for Lot 3, both upland and underwater, will be 77,359 square feet. The Department of Environmental Conservation, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers, has approved the replacement of bulkheads from years of deterioration. The village of Plandon Manor has approved the request for variances, variance for street frontage for proposed Lot 1, and variance for lot width and street frontage for proposed Lot 30. This was originally heard at the May 30, 2019, planning meeting and was approved. It is before us today for an extension of time to file the deeds. The resolution was signed on July 1, 2019. The new date of filing will be extended and must be completed by January 1, 2021. Here to speak on the application is Howard Avrutin, as well as Danielle Rizzo and Meredith Black.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission appearing for the applicants, Howard Avrutin, 575 Underhill Boulevard, Syosset, as set forth by Ms. Paz, in a very comprehensive fashion. You've heard about the previously approved subdivision of the premises under application into three parcels for the purpose of developing them, each with a new single-family dwelling, as set forth on the plans. Everything was approved by the Commission. The subdivision application to create the three lots was approved by the Commission on May 30, 2019, and as Ms. Paz indicated, it was certified on July 1, 2019. Deeds have been submitted to the Nassau County Clerk's Office for recording. They were submitted back in May. We checked as recently as yesterday as to the status of the recording, as I'm sure as the Commission is aware, with the ongoing issues and the limitations imposed by the pandemic. We have been unable to verify whether the recording has actually taken place as of yet, so in order to ensure that we do not fall into a position where our period of time within which to record the deeds expires without having done so, we have filed this application to extend the time to effectuate the deed recording. It may very well be that the deeds have been recorded already, but we just don't know, and there's no way to check with the Nassau County Clerk's Office on the status, so we just await receipt back of the recorded deeds, or in the event they require something further, some sort of notification, but we have not heard back from the Clerk's Office, hence our request for additional time within which to effectuate the deed recording.
Okay. Counsel, just so you know, I had asked a question. I am told that you can make an appointment with the Clerk's Office, and you have up to an hour and 45 minutes at the office, but you know, it's a first request for an application, so it would be extended to January 1 of 2021. As you know, we can't take any action on it today, but I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that.
Thank you for that information. I was not aware that you could actually do that, but thank you. I will advise, and we'll go from there. We had, just for the Commission's edification, we had engaged the services of a title company to effectuate the deed recording, so maybe we'll have them follow up on that. So the date would be January 1, 2021, just to clarify?
That would be the extension, right? Because the filing date is July 1, I believe?
The, well, the.
Resolution was signed.
Correct. That's when our year had started.
Right, so generally, we grant two six-month extensions upon request, so this would be the.
Appreciate it. I'm hopeful that we will get these deeds recorded far in advance of January 1.
Okay. Did you have anybody else with you that wanted to speak on this, or?
I don't think so. I know one of my, the representative of the applicant is here, Danielle Rizzo, as well as Meredith Black. They are on the call, but I don't believe they have anything further to add.
Okay. So Commissioners, I assume nobody else has anything to add? To the public, again, any comments on this application must be submitted by Monday, June 29 at 4:00 p.m. via email to ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov. All right, thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Can I just ask an additional question?
Yeah.
At which meeting of the Commission will this decision be issued?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Thank you so much.
July 2.
Great, thank you.
That's it, we receive all comments, and it's going to be Zoomed as well, so if you want to log on.
Will do. Thank you again.
Very good. Be safe.
You too.
All right, Minor.
So now I will recuse myself at this time.
And Bob O'Brien is going to recuse himself as well. Okay.
This is NCPC, File Number 21, 2020. The applicant is New York Land Development, 2 Corporation.
Oh, I see, Greg, sorry. I didn't see.
No problem. The site is located at 18 Linden Place in Roosevelt, Section 55, Block 501, Lot 298. This 9,816 square foot area subject property is situated on the south side of Linden Place in the hamlet of Roosevelt in the town of Hempstead. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 84.77 feet of frontage on Linden Place, into two separate parcels. Proposed Lot A will have 42 feet of frontage for a total of 5,047 square foot area parcel. Proposed Lot B will have 42.77 feet of frontage, a total of 4,769 square foot area parcel. The Town of Hempstead Board of Zoning Appeals has approved the request for variances for the proposed subdivision. Subdivision of Lot, lot area, front width from an on-street line to front setback line, construct dwelling with a garage. Here to speak on the application is Jed Nelson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jed Nelson. I am a real New York State Certified General Real Estate Appraiser, as well as a New York State Broker. I am here presenting on behalf of New York Land Development as. As indicated earlier, the parcels known as
Mr. Nelson, what's your location? What's your address, for the record?
Oh, I apologize. 1380 Belmore Avenue, Belmore, New York, 11710.
Okay, is that, that's the corporate address?
That is correct.
Okay.
Once again, as indicated earlier, the property is known as Section 55, Block 501, Lot 298 on the Nassau County Land and Tax Maps, physically located on the south side of Linden Place, 198.5 feet west of Branch Place. It's known as 18 Linden Place, Roosevelt, New York. The property was the subject of a Town of Hempstead zoning board appeals hearing on November 13 of 2019. It was requesting a subdivision, which was subsequently granted without any incident and without any objections on December 16, 2019. The proposed two, two new modest-style colonial homes will certainly be an upgrade to the site, as well as a complement to the neighborhood without any detriment to any nearby neighbors, neighborhood, or the municipality. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision, which will not adversely affect any of the surrounding neighbors. The applicant has a long history of successful work in this area without any incidents that I'm aware of. The applicant, the application as proposed, in my professional opinion, is reasonable and will be a benefit to the community. Short and sweet, that's my application. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Mr. Nelson, so our concern is the smallest lot in the radius map that we have was 4,800 square feet, and this is going to be below the 4,800 square feet, the one parcel. So we do have a little bit of concern because we're looking at some of the other parcels nearby. The Cruz parcel on Branch is just under 9,000. You know, I, the question, I guess, really, in terms of the frontage, is there any way to bring these parcels to more evenly divided than what you currently have?
I'd have to consult with the applicant. I'm sure you're familiar with Jim Bianco and New York Land Development. I would certainly discuss it with him. Parcel A is just over 5,000 square feet, and Parcel B is about 3100, or 31 square feet short of the 48. I, without, without causing a concern with the frontage and putting the line on an angle, I think this is the best how it lays out. But I will discuss it with the applicant. I don't know if Jimmy is on this call.
He's not.
He's not. He indicated to me that he would, but I would be happy to discuss it with him.
If you look at the backyards, your backyard on Parcel B is 39.71 feet, and the other one is 52.6. That's a pretty big difference.
Correct, but that is making parallel lines. Now, I'm sure if he wanted to, if the board wants him to, he can certainly make the, the backyards a little bit more even, but now that certainly it does affect right, right-angle lines.
I have a question. So these are single-family homes with, with garages and driveways to accommodate how many cars?
The, there is a one-car garage built into the house. There is a two-car driveway for each lot, so it will afford three-car parking on-site. The driveways and the, and the layout were that the, the driveways are on the inside, not to affect any of the budding neighbors. They actually butt up to each other.
So, so the driveway for the, for the 39.71, you know, the one closest to the curve, so the driveway will be to the left of the, it won't be right at the curve, right? When you're coming around? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
Once again, the
To the center of the lot line, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay. Any other Commissioners?
Just, I'm sorry. Let me throw a quick question. Based on your expertise in terms of real estate and land values and community character, could you just speak to the question of community character? The, most of the homes that are facing it are 60 wide, or there's at least one that looks like it's 80 wide. This is going all the way down to almost 40 feet wide. Do you believe that this would have a negative impact on the community character by sort of squeezing in the homes on that property?
Very good question. The majority of the homes on the block that especially facing the subject property are slightly dated in nature in that they were built in the 50s and the 60s. They do not take up the majority of the land area. Most of them are modest Cape Cod-style homes or ranch-style homes. The price ranges, and pursuant to my presentation at the zoning board, the price ranges, if you bear with me, range from anywhere about $150,000 to maybe just over $300,000 or $350,000. The proposed new constructions are going to sell, here, I'm sorry. I found the specific page of my presentation to the zoning board. The existing homes in the area range from a low of, below $200,000 to a moderate high of about $450,000. The new constructions in the area range from approximately $400,000 to about $500,000 to $525,000. The proposed new constructions for the subject property will sell in approximately $500,000 range, thereby being the higher end of the value for this neighborhood, and in my professional opinion, will complement the neighborhood characteristics and help sustain the values in the area. Even though the lots are slightly smaller than some of them in the immediate area, the fact of a new construction, a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, modest colonial, I think they're approximately 2,000 square feet without the garage, is going to complement this neighborhood.
With regards to the basements, what will the egress be?
Interior, no X, no X, I apologize. I don't mean to cut you off. All interior ingress and egress. There is a large window in the back that was required by New York State. The basements will not be finished by my applicant, and there will not be any exterior staircases.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. For the public, we will not vote on this until next Thursday, July 2, at our 9:00 a.m. meeting. If you'd like to submit any comments, please email them to ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov by 4:00 p.m. this Monday, June 29. That's ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov.
Marty, so all, so there, there's, oh, I'm so sorry. People in the neighborhood were contacted about this, this property going up, right?
I think that's what the radius map would show, is who received notice of it.
Everybody would
Yes, Justin, if you'd like, I did, oh, hi, Jas.
Hello.
Yes, I sent out notices to all the homeowners within the 200-foot radius. I got back, I think there are 31, one house is vacant, wasn't able to be delivered, and I believe I got back about 26 other cards, and I have provided them to Jasleen.
Well, do you want to say how many people showed up at the hearing and how the hearing went?
There were no objectors, no neighbors showed up to the zoning hearing, and it went without incident.
And that was back in December, well before the shutdown.
The application was actually in November. The hearing was in November, and yes, that was prior to the shutdown.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nelson, just for the record, I don't know if you can see the screen, if you have the radius map handy, but directly across the street on the north side of Linden Place, the Portillo residence or property, the notation is 6,000 square feet, but it appears that it's made up of four 20-by-100 tax lots?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's in fact an 8,000-square-foot parcel?
I believe that is correct. That's based on the radius map I'm looking at now. I don't believe that's the same radius map, or I don't believe that was an error when I made the application to the zoning board, but that is correct. I believe that is an 8,000-square-foot lot. That house is in pretty good condition. The likelihood is somebody is not going to buy that for $300,000 and $350,000 and tear it down. It's just not economically, you know, feasible.
Okay, I would just like the record to reflect that that property is in fact 8,000.
Good eye.
Thank you.
I got to tell Commissioner Warren, I feel like I'm watching a music video or something where your head comes through that plaque. So just, just once again, since we digress for a second, comment should be received nullated on Monday, June 29 at 4:00 p.m. via email to ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov. All right, and we'll make a decision on July 2, at our July 2 meeting.
Very good. Everybody be safe. Thank you for the opportunity.
Be safe. Thank you. Okay. We got Mr. Vanessa in the room now? Yes, we do.
Did we get Bob and Jeff back?
Oh, yep. Bob, you're back.
Okay, thank you.
Round to 22, 2020.
I'm back.
Welcome back, Joe.
Next minor subdivision is 22-2020. The applicants are 50 Sherwood Road Corp. and 1641 Belmore Road, Belmore Road Corp. This is for a lot line adjustment. Site location is 2676 Range Road in Belmore, as well as 1641 Belmore Road. Section 56, Block 383, lots 596, 601, 602, and 606. The purpose of this application is to reapportion the two parcels of the subject with the, which have frontage on Belmore Road and Range Road. The 50,826-square-foot area subject property situated on the southeast corner of Belmore Road and Range Road in the hamlet of Belmore in the town of Hempstead. The frontage for both parcels will remain the same. Their existing shared lot line will extend northeast. The resulting reapportion, Lot 1, which is 1641 Belmore Road, will have a net area of 41,866 square feet. And the resulting reapportionment, Lot 2, which is 2676 Range Road, will have a net area of 8,960 square feet. The Town of Hempstead Board of Zoning Appeals has approved the request for variances for the proposed subdivision.
I lost the sound. What happened?
We didn't lose you, Joe.
Am I the only one?
Yeah, I'm able to hear everything.
Use variance to construct buildings to use, to be used for proposed daycare with a lot area occupied inside yard variances. Decision number 144/20. The Planning Commission saw this application back in January and made a motion to deem it incomplete, and additional information was needed. The Commission requested that a traffic study be performed due to the fact that the daycare would fall near the acute intersection of two major roads, Belmore Road and Belmore Avenue. Here to speak on the application is Mr. Bill Vanessa.
Good morning, Counsel. Got to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the, of the Commission. William Vanessa, Chelildegan, Tarana, 333 Earl Overington Boulevard, Uniondale, New York. Here in connection with the application described by Ms. Paz. This is a proposed lot line change. I represent the contract bandee for this property. The property in its present use and condition is something of a hodgepodge of commercial and residential development. It's very tired-looking. It's been an issue with the neighbors over time. It's been a landscaper's yard. It's been a nursery. It's been a number of different things. The proposal that was presented to the Board of Appeals and to the neighbors and approved by all is to redevelop the entire property. The property, as you can see, is kind of, basically U-shaped. It maintains frontage along Belmore Road and the corner of Belmore Road and Belmore Avenue. It also has frontage of Range Road, which is a residential roadway. The, the overall property is made up of four tax lots. Tax lot 606, in the back, if you will, is the west-easternmost portion of the property. And then on, along Belmore Road, you've got tax lots 596, 601, and 602. The property is also split-zoned. If you look closely, you'll see that the property on the corner of Range Road and Belmore Road and along Belmore Road is Zone Business X District, while the remainder of the property behind that, to the east of that, is Zone Resident B District. We went before the Board of Appeals seeking variance and special permit relief to allow a redevelopment of the property with a Goddard early childhood educational facility, a Goddard School. It will only be the second one on Long Island. My client operates one in Bucks County, Pennsylvania, a very successful one. And we, we met with the neighbors very early on. And, and just to give you some, some concept of what a yeoman's job my client did, this had been the site of a Tudor Time proposal previously, and it had a site plan that was really, just in my opinion, terrible. And the board felt the same way. The neighbors felt the same way. It was denied with vigorous opposition. We took a much different approach. As much as the, the front, I'll call the west side, the front of the property is Zone Business X District, that was, we determined the better place to put the parking lot and the site access for the property, even though that meant putting the building in the residential zone, which required a use variance. The prior applicant had sought to do it the quote-unquote "easier" way, which was to put the building, the commercial building, in the business zone. But that forced all traffic down Range Road and the access through the residential lot, and all the, all the vehicular activity was going to be occurring behind and around the residential properties, and all the traffic was going to be going down Range Road. So it was heavily opposed.
Counsel, as long as you're on the traffic, that was our concern the last time. We, we said it was deemed incomplete. We wanted to see a traffic study. Stairs said they never received anything back.
Well, we did, I mean, at the time that the traffic study was requested, it wasn't prepared yet. As you know, Town of Hempstead doesn't require a written report in advance, so there wasn't anything in writing. I frankly was never contacted by, by anyone to ask for a traffic study. We did do a traffic study. Our expert was, is Wayne Muller from R&amp;M Engineering. He, in fact, designed the access so that it would work, and he has vetted it with Nassau County DPW. Initially, as it was originally proposed, the access point was going to be closer to the intersection of Range Road and Belmore Road. And the neighbor said, you know, that just wasn't going to work because there's like a speedway that goes down Belmore Road. So he redesigned it to be at the intersection of Belmore So he redesigned it to be at the intersection of Belmore Avenue or Belmore Road with a, a new traffic light that would actually control ingress and egress from the site.
So that traffic study's been completed?
Yes, yeah.
So maybe you can get that to staff in short order before we vote on this next week.
Sure, that's, that's no problem. But, but basically, what the neighbors liked and what the, the Board of Appeals liked and, and subsequently what Nassau County DPW has, has indicated they are willing to accept is the traffic light, the, a new re-timed traffic light at the intersection, which my client is going to be financially on the hook for. But, but nonetheless will significantly safeguard the access to the property. So, all this being said, the reason why we're before the, the commission today is specifically to create Proposed Lot 2. At the present time, Tax Lot 606, you can see its current lot line. That, that back portion coming off of Range Road is actually going to be dedicated to the commercial use on the remainder of the property. Proposed Lot Number 2 is going to be the site of a single-family residence that my client is going to build and live in when the, while the applicant, while the Goddard School is being built and opened and, and initially operated. She's going to have also a partner who will, who will be an onsite owner. And eventually she will probably move back to Bucks County. But for the time being, she's building a single-family house on Proposed Lot 2. It's a fully compliant lot. It exceeds all of the lot area, lot width setback requirements. There's no, there's no house planned for it right now. But it can easily accommodate a, a house that will meet the setbacks and the lot coverage and all of that. But we are basically relocating the lot line for Lot 606 to what is now shown as prop, as proposed property line along that southerly border of what would be Proposed Lot 2.
Hey, hey, Counselor, you're, you're aware that the commission put out new, new guidance on daycare centers? You and your client in the last year? Did you hear me? Counselor, did you hear me?
I did not.
I said you're aware that in the past year, we put out new guidelines for daycare centers? So I just want to make sure that, that you and your client are aware of that.
I'm, I'm sure she will be completely up to code. She's a, a real stickler for all, all regulations.
Well, staff will provide you with a copy as well.
That's fine. She's among the, of all the Goddard Schools in the country, she's among the top, top six Goddard School operators.
She's the god of the Goddards?
Pardon?
I said she's the god of the Goddards?
Yes, they, they have something else, some other name for it, but she's in that club.
Okay.
And she has really, it's, it's amazing how she won the neighbors over. Because we had four community meetings. First one was hostile, they thought it was going to be the same business as usual. The next one, we made a lot of progress. The next one, they loved the plan. And then they actually all came out to the zoning board hearing and supported her.
Okay. Commissioners? Questions, comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that hopefully between now and the next meeting, the report that was done on that traffic flow can be shared with our staff so that they could review it and brief us on it at the next meeting.
Yes, I'll get that to Mr. Katz immediately.
And Marty, what I would do too, since the public has time to issue comments, as soon as you get it, put it up on the, the website as well, so they have access to it.
I think what'll also be helpful is, as Mr. Vanessa mentioned, County Public Works Traffic Division has been reviewing this 239F and the access arrangement. So I think a, a report, staff can request a report from our traffic folks and present that to the, to the commission before next Thursday. So you can see the, you know, DPW's interaction with the, with the developer with respect to the access on Belmore Road.
And that would be great. Just make, again, make sure that it's online so the public can see it as well.
Sure.
All right, anyone else? So, as you know, counsel, we reserve until next Thursday, July 2nd at 9:00 AM. After, we have a period of time for the public to submit comments, which expires at 4:00 PM on June 29th, which is this Monday. Any comment should be sent via email to ncpc@nassaucountyny.gov. Again, they have to be received by no later than 4:00 PM on Monday, June 29th. And then staff will review the comments. We'll get to consider the comments and we'll vote next Thursday at 9:00 AM. Okay, thank you, counsel. Be safe.
Thank you, you too.
Vice Chairman Shapiro, the ball is in your court.
Okay. Are there any other questions on the LDs, NCPC item number 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 8? Not seeing any, I will take a motion for, to LD NCPC Agenda Items Number 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 8. Anybody?
Almost, almost.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hold on a second. Roll call. Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Blue?
Yes.
Third Vice Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Shapiro?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Greenfield?
Yes.
Chairman Glennon, yes, okay.
Okay, Marty, you want to start with item number one first?
Yes. This is NCPC Case Number 823.
You're talking to the microphone so we can all hear.
That's what I'm doing, as close as I can get.
Ah, you're good.
Now you are.
Okay, NCPC Case Number 823119, Town of Oyster Bay, Hamlet, Massapequa. And it's area variances, flag lot subdivision with insufficient frontage on a public street. This is a proposed three lot flat, three lot flag lot subdivision at the end of Dead End Williams Street. Subject property is currently occupied by a dwelling setback a significant distance from Dead End of Williams Street. A state of trees borders both sides of the gravel driveway. The Town of Oyster Bay does provide a flag lot subdivisions, which this is. The case was initially before the Planning Commission on 9/5/2019, at which time it denied the application for the following reasons. One is TOB prohibits to create some flag lot subdivisions in an all 1.7 zone. Second is doesn't comply with the provisions of New York State Hamlet 288 that requires a lot to have a minimum of 15 feet of frontage on a public road. And three, it may establish a precedent. In the interim, the, in the interim, the applicant provided a letter from the local fire department indicating that the proposed subdivision can be adequately, adequately served by the fire department. Snap recommends a local determination with a letter stating that no first subdivision on Lot C, which is quite large, can be, with no first subdivision of Lot C, which is 33,000 square feet. So that's what staff is recommending at this point in time.
Marty, can I ask, why is that last lot so much larger? Is, is part of it undevelopable or?
I, I don't know. I, I can, I can say that it can be subdivided. It can be one, you know, and down the road, maybe the applicant will attempt to subdivide it. It was relaxed.
Yeah, I think your idea that we raise that concern about future subdivisions is reasonable, yeah.
What constitutes a major subdivision?
Was it five or more lots?
Yeah, so.
So theoretically, if, if, if the applicant decided to subdivide Parcel C, he cites, you know, he'd be doing it piecemeal and he, and he would be sidestepping the major subdivision proposal, subdivision requirements. But I, you know, I can't say that that's what's on his mind.
But it is, it is possible, right?
Yeah, I, I would think it would be.
Yeah.
Marty, Marty, is this coming back in front of us?
Subdivision.
For, for subdivision, it would be coming back, yes. If you, if the town approves the, the variances.
Well, at that time, we'll get another, you know, hit on it and be able to put it on the record about what they.
That's true.
What they proposed for that dwelling, for that, that lot. And if they are going to subdivide, because they have to state that on the record, we've had that before.
Can we go back to the aerial view? I just wanted to see something.
Lot of trees.
Yeah.
Lot.
So we have. Where's the entrance, Williams Street?
Yeah, I, I think I, I took a picture some while back, not this time around, but initially. There may be a picture on here of, of the view from Williams Street.
Yeah, come off Williams Street.
Maybe, but it wasn't incorporated onto this. But again, it's a gravel driveway with trees on both sides of the gravel driveway leading to a residence.
They're going to have to have some type of access agreement coming off of Williams Street for the two homes.
Right.
Your driveway.
That's true.
So when they come to us, we'll have to ask them for that.
Right.
Right, they'll need an easement.
So I'd like to ask that if we're proposing a LD with a letter, that the letter will also raise the concern that there should be an effort to replace as many trees as possible from, you know, a fairly substantial amount of trees are going to be cleared. The Town of Hempstead, we, we talked about the Town of Hempstead's tree planting a couple of weeks back. But this is Town of Oyster Bay, right? I think there's standard, maybe more lax on the tree planning requirement. So I just want to raise that concern if we can get a chance to do that in the letter.
Okay, right on target, Neil.
All right. Glennon, how do you want to do this? You want to do them individually?
Yeah, let's do it individually. I, I'll take a motion.
Can I just? Can I, can I just ask a question? So when they're proposing these, you know, the, the division of this property into the two lots, are they creating a flag lot because there's really no entrance other than?
That's what it is, it's a flag lot subdivision.
Yeah.
Definitely a flag lot.
Okay.
Okay. But can we? I mean, can we, you know, I, I know that we always have concerns about the fire trucks and, and all of that. I mean, I, I mean, if, even if they have that easement to get in there on Williams Street, what is the turnaround going to look like to get a fire truck out? I mean, I know, you know, that some, we've raised that issue before. Like I, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, the applicant received the letter from the, from the fire department indicating, like based on the configuration, the configuration of the subdivision, that the, the flag lot subdivision can, can be served effectively by the fire department. So there, there is a letter which we got.
And plus Jeff, Jeff will tell you, if you see those trees up on Williams Street, if you get in there, there would be no trees after he was done.
The other thing is that we will get another, another hit on this when it comes back for a minor subdivision.
That's right. And it does appear like there's extra space in that last lot for turnarounds and things like that.
Right.
Okay.
It's a good question, we'll ask it again when it comes to subdivision.
Absolutely. All right, so I do, do I have a motion for LD with a letter?
Okay, yeah, so, Commissioner. Yeah, Counsel Brian said that what they've done in the past is require a turnaround at the end of the flag lot for emergency vehicles. So you may want to include that in the letter.
I would.
Like right around where the words Parcel C are, are the, are the flag there?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I'll make the motion that we approve, or that we do a referral of a local determination with the letter and that the letter addresses several points that have been raised here in regards to the, the safe access by emergency vehicles and that we encourage as much tree replanting as possible. And I think there might have been a third point for the letter, or that's it?
Also, cross-access agreement.
And the cross-access agreement has to be executed. And yes, the turnaround was the other item.
Back it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Chairman?
Roll call. Commissioner Warren?
Yeah.
Commissioner Blue?
Yes.
Third Vice Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Shapiro?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Greenfield?
Yes.
Chairman Glennon, yes.
Okay, Marty, do you want to proceed with item number five?
Yes, yes, I do. Okay, item from the zoning agenda is NCPC Case Number 616320. This is the Town of Hempstead, the Hamlet of Inwood. It's for special exception, height and area variances and a waiver, and a waiver of Wall Street parking. This is a proposed four-story religious school, 29,184 square feet, with a gym to be located below, below grade. 24 parking spaces are proposed to the rear of the site with some surface parking and some spaces located below a raised gym. 190 parking spaces are required. None of these spaces are parking compliant by town's, town standards, as several have insufficient backup area and all are located in a residential district. The building is four stories with a height of 54 feet 6 inches, a maximum height of 45 feet is permitted. The number of stories is only compliant for a religious institution in that residential zone. So it's only compliant from that regard in terms of the number of stories. The proposed, the proposed project has a lot coverage of 46.7%. Maximum lot coverage of 27.5% is permitted. And the site is quite deep, it's 36,128 square feet in depth of 324 feet. There are currently two homes on the property that will be demolished by front of Mid Avenue. The site is located in a residential neighborhood, one block removed from Rockaway Turnpike. Mid Avenue was two lanes with what appears to be no car, no parking. There are no, no signs evident, but parking would be a little awkward. That's a very narrow shoulder. On the other, across the street, there's no parking lane indicated. Circular driveways proposed on Mid Avenue. Staff is recommending additional information. Provided an alternative site plan with scaled back building and reduced height. Provide elevation of the building, being that it's on a residential area, it's in what it looks like from the street and provide a parking and traffic analysis as this is quite a large institutional use in a residential neighborhood. So. That's, we all with that? Any questions, comments?
I agree with the recommendations made. And I'd make a motion that we request that additional information before taking action.
Is this going to come back in front of us?
I'm sorry. This will only come back in front of us if, if the Town of Hempstead takes our recommendation for additional information seriously. For all, for all I know, this could be a controversial project anyhow and, and the town might reserve decision on it until a traffic study is. They're going to probably want a traffic study anyhow, but of course we would.
The answer to his question is no, will not come back in front of us if it's approved, if we.
Right, if, if it's approved by the town, as is, it's not going to come back.
There's no further subdivision. So this is all one crack at giving an opinion on it. And I do think it's reasonable, the, the chairman's motion that we request additional information to see the plan on how they're going to manage this. So I second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Chairman, do you want to do a roll call?
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Blue?
Yes.
Third Vice Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Shapiro?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Greenfield?
Yes.
Chairman Glennon, yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Is that it?
Mr. Chairman, going to make a very brief announcement or just to give you guys a heads up?
I just want to make sure we're done with zoning.
Right.
That's it.
That's it, yep, go ahead.
Okay, so I've been invited to speak. Okay, so I've been invited to speak at the Suffolk County Planning Commission next Wednesday. They do meetings once a month rather than twice. And, uh, it has to do with, uh, the New York State proposal for, uh, stretch energy codes to be adopted by local government. So just sort of mentioned that to you. It's in my capacity as the, uh, Executive Director of Sustainability Institute at Malloy, not obviously in my capacity as a member of this commission, but I did want to give just a heads up, uh, and, uh, that's it.
I assume they're doing their meetings remotely as well?
Yes, that's right. Yes, we'll be, uh, speaking on Zoom. I think they started, uh, just a couple of weeks before we did. So they were the first, one of the first out of the box with Zoom. But yes.
Okay, uh, before I read the final statement again, I just want to, uh, thank Jaslyn, uh, for all her work and wish her the best, uh, going forward, Jas. It was, that's been a real pleasure. So, uh, we, don't be a stranger. We hope to see you again.
Thank you.
All right. I just have to read this final statement. Uh, due to the coronavirus, uh, emergency in state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings in pursuit to Governor Cuomo's executive order issued March twelve, twenty twenty, suspending the open meetings law, the June twenty-fifth meeting of the Nassau County Planning Commission will be held electronically via Zoom and may be viewed by the public via livestream on Zoom, uh, as described below. The public, uh, the public may send in their comments for the public portion of the meeting via email to the email address below. The, uh, planning commission will review and consider these public comments prior to making a final decision next week, uh, July second. A recording of the meeting will also be posted on the Nassau County Planning Commission website within twenty-four hours. Instead of a public meeting open for the public to attend in person, members of the public may listen to or log into the video conference. Access and instructions for Zoom is available on the Nassau County Planning Department webpage, which is www.nassaucounty.ny.gov forward slash two eight five six forward slash planning hyphen department. Final decisions will be made on items contained in agenda items B, uh, A and D. Actually, it was just D. Uh, actually, it was just the F, uh, at the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty Nassau, uh, County Planning Commission. The planning commission will be accepting public comments for the public portion of the June twenty-fifth planning commission meeting on agenda items B, C, D and E via email at nas- ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov. The planning commission will accept public comments, uh, via email for agenda items B, C, D and E before making a final decision on the matter. The public has until four PM on Monday, June twenty-ninth to email the comments for the items contained in agenda items B, C, D and E to the email specified, uh, address specified above. Uh, late comments received after Monday, June twenty-ninth at four PM will not be accepted nor considered. A second meeting will take place after public comments are received, reviewed and considered by the planning commission for each item contained in agendas item B, C, D and E on Thursday, July second at nine AM, where the planning commission will make a final decision on each item contained in agenda items B, C, D and E. This meeting will also be conducted using a virtual meeting, uh, via Zoom and access instructions will be provided on the Nassau County Planning Department homepage. Uh, with that being said, I wish everyone, uh, a good week and stay safe.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.
Take care.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Good luck, Jas.
Good luck, Jas.
Good luck, Jas.
Yeah, good luck, Jas.
Good luck, Jaz. All the best. Have a good.